Always the way I like to proceed. But we wanted to put everything in front of you so you can feel comfortable when you change the map to allow the TOD and VC that you know what you're going to get because there's an approved site plan. And we'll get into that. So we asked that you act on both together after the public hearings are closed and you can set effective dates for each as you deem appropriate for the site plan to follow the effective date of the map. Beth, can you allow me to share my screen? Is that allowed?
Beth appears to be muted.
Where is Beth? She's muted and there's no video anymore.
Hold on, I'm going to send a chat to her. I'm sending a chat over. So how about them Yankees, guys?
I like your hair, Penny. Looks good.
Thank you. You should see it when I come back from a walk in the weather. It's like-
Well, we're all, you know, getting a little shaggy, but yours seems to look nice.
Thank you.
Little shaggy.
Nancy, do you want to give Beth the call? Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, I had to step away.
Beth, could you allow me to share my screen, please?
Yes. How do I do it again, Peter?
Probably right-click on me-
Right, there I am. Okay, share screen. No, right-click. Okay, if I'm going to share the screen-
So you want to allow me to share my screen?
Beth, if you hand him presenter rights, he can do it.
I make him a host?
Yep, exactly.
Thanks, Rich.
Sorry, I got thrown off by the dog. Okay, Peter, you should be able to do it now.
Okay, I got it. So this is the Google Street Maps view. The property in question consists of a single parcel of land containing .36 acres. It's improved with a house that was built, according to Pat Wild, between 1858 and 1867. You can see the house there. I'm going to turn as we head up South Street. There's Rob Schweitzer's old stomping grounds. You can see in the back on Taylor Avenue, a red house that was built in 1799. Nothing in between. There used to be a barn there, but there isn't. Across the street, we have some similar construction homes. And then we have the Verdi woodworking building, railroad tracks, the old train station in Agway up that way. It's bounded on two sides by roads, Taylor Avenue and South Street, and the Metro North Railroad tracks run directly next to the property, which are then in turn adjacent to Agway. You can see the Agway parking lot there. The house itself is, in my opinion, rather nondescript. It's fairly simple farmhouse style. Pat Wild again said between 1858 and 1867. We asked him to prepare a report because we were suggesting that we demolish the building and replace it with new construction. We wanted to make sure we weren't going to be destroying any particularly important historic resources. He prepared a report and it's in the materials submitted to you. His conclusion was there's no evidence, anything of significant historic importance is associated with this building. So we thank Pat for his report. Nevertheless, we did want to make sure that in designing the new building, we came up with a building idea and concept that felt like it fit in a historic neighborhood. So now I'll switch to that while I talk for a little while. That's our proposed building on this site. We looked at a number of different ways to approach the development of the property. There is a prior approval for three units, but these are rather large condominium units of 1850, 2400, and 2400 square feet respectively. We looked at using the Affordable Housing Appeals Act to get a whole bunch of units, but felt that we didn't really want to build the number of units that would be required to make that kind of a project work with that number of affordable units. So we arrived at looking at the TOD, which allows for 30 units per acre with the requirement that if you have over five, you have to provide some affordable units. And what worked for this site is 10 units. As Beth noted, two of those would be affordable. We think that's a reasonable density for the downtown and it allows us to propose 10 600-square-foot units. That's the plan for these. So the existing zoning is bright red for RMO. You can see that it is bordered by the gray industrial zone, which is all of the area in the south. And in fact, this property itself used to be in the industrial zone until it was changed to RMO. That connects it with the rest of what's on Taylor Avenue, which is basically all industrial. It is located just outside the adopted TOD overlay district boundaries. The Verdi woodworking property across the street is within the boundary, but we happen to be without. Now if I can get to... This is the Bethel Forward master plan. The boundary, I'm going to draw with my arrow, essentially goes like this around the other side of the street. But as you can see, and as Beth mentioned, a number of the maps in the in the plan show development and redevelopment of this particular property. You can see these four or five house structures here proposed for for this property. So we believe that the TOD master plan incorporated in the Plan of Conservation and Development as it is provides guidance that makes it appropriate for the TOD to be applied to this property. Back to the zoning map. The VC district is the light green. That's Village Center. The Verdi woodworking property, again, directly across the street is in VC, as is the train station parcel. And so we have a logical extension of the VC to cover our property. Logically, it would make sense to put the Agway property and the property owned by Bowden into the VC as well at some point because of the way those properties function with respect to the rest of the downtown. As you head up east, I guess, on South Street, there's the large cemetery and the firehouse, which doesn't really matter what zone those are in for the moment. We've asked that this underlying zone be changed as well as the TOD overlay be applied because of an inconsistency in the language of the TOD zone where it may or may not, depending on how you want to argue it, be linked to the density in the underlying zone. So by putting it in the VC, we can take advantage of the 30 units an acre, which allows the 10 units on the property without any questions about interpretation. The standard for a zone map amendment is, of course, that the amendment be in accordance with a comprehensive plan. And I think the information I just outlined shows you that it would be in accordance with the comprehensive plan of the downtown as laid out on the graph. In addition, you have to make findings that it's in accordance with the Plan of Conservation and Development. The TOD plan is incorporated into your Plan of Conservation and Development, and therefore we believe it's in accordance with that as well. The TOD boundary, as I noted, was drawn across the street, and that is based on a five or 10 walk. I went to Google Maps and I asked Google Maps to show me how to walk to the train station from this property. And that is essentially the blue dots. And what it's telling you is to walk through the old train station property, up School Street to Library Place to School Street, and then onto Durant and up to the train station. And I think there's sidewalks all the way, or at least there will be. Google says it's .6 miles and 12 minutes to do that walk. So even though the plan talks about a five-minute circle and a 10-minute circle, it's well-established that TOD should function at a 15-minute interval. And that's where, within that, I suppose, for most people to make that walk in 12 minutes. So if my memory serves me, during the discussion of the TOD adoption, the question of whether this property in Agway and Bowden should be put into the TOD was the conversation. And my recollection is that it was deferred. Because let's just do what we're going to do now and we'll worry about that later. But I don't think there was any decision to specifically reject them as not appropriate for TOD. So again, we submit the zoning map amendment will be in accordance with a comprehensive plan and the Plan of Conservation and Development and should be approved. I guess we should go on to the site plan and we'll get through that and maybe do all the questions at the same time, if that's okay?
Yes.
There's a couple of items for me to address on the site plan. In the Health Department report, item one, Health Department claims that it is a standard practice to obtain a Phase One environmental report. We respectfully disagree. We don't believe it's standard practice at all, and in fact, we avoid it if we at all possibly can. We would only ever do a Phase One if this were a property that we knew had a history of pollution or discharge. If it were an industrial property, if our bank for financing told us we had to do it, only then would we have a Phase One done. This property has been residential as long as anybody can remember, and so we don't think there's any indication that a Phase One would be appropriate. It may be that when we go get construction financing, that the bank will say, no, we need to do a Phase One, but it's just as likely they may say to us, you need to do an environmental screening, which is a much shorter report, and it just says one or two pages that, you know, nothing to worry about here. And we'll obviously provide those to the Health Department when we get them, but we don't think it's something we need to do at this time. In the Wright Pierce report, site plan items one and two, there were a couple of questions raised regarding the survey. I reached out to Zach Rapp to review that. He's the surveyor, and he will prepare an updated topographic survey. He thinks there was just a timing issue with one of the items, and he knows how to clarify the other item. So with that, I'd like to ask Kurt Verdi of Verdi Properties to present the architecture of the building. I'm going to put it up on my screen again and try to follow along with what Kurt is talking about, so he's got some assistance. Kurt? Does he need to be unmuted?
Yes, try.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. We are proposing an architecturally correct building, which will seamlessly fit into the fabric of downtown. We've thoughtfully designed a traditional colonial-style building, which will certainly make for a much stronger and more interesting downtown Bethel. This style of architecture dates back hundreds of years, and examples of this architectural style can be seen throughout the surrounding towns, including Bethel. Our design intent is timeless and slightly understated.
Is he muted again?
No, he froze. Sure. The elevations-
You said timeless and understated, Kurt. And then you froze.
All right. Our design intent-
Yeah, you're frozen again.
We'll try this one more time. How about now?
We can hear you.
Okay. Our design intent is timeless and slightly understated, however historically correct. The elevations and the masting are purposely simple. We have achieved good scale along with good function. We have enclosed all of the stairs for enhanced aesthetics as well as safety for the end user. We have designed and implemented traditional details which complement and complete the entire package. That's what we have.
So let me let me run through the renderings on my screen. The one that you see here is the front rendering. East and west elevation in drawing form. I can zoom in a little bit. Those are both the elevations. If I can go to the plans. Kurt, do you want to take through a little bit about how the various units will be accessed?
Sure, happy to. Okay, I think the main feature would be this central vestibule, which will allow access. First of all, you walk into that vestibule, and that will be the only section of the building that will have a full basement. In the basement will have washer, dryer, the water meters, the meter rooms, and the other mechanicals. All right? The two stairs go up to four units. And from that vestibule, you'll be able to access four units. So that's a very significant part of the accessibility. It'll also allow you to flow through from the parking lot to the front sidewalk on South Street and back and forth. So that's a that's a nice element architecturally. Then you'll see there are three other stairs, enclosed stairs, one in the rear. Okay, and that will allow you to access one unit. We have the enclosed stair to the left, which is adjacent to the railroad tracks. What we've decided to do there is construct both the stair enclosure and the exterior walls of that portion right there exactly with a sound attenuation insulation in response to one of the items on the, let's see, which report was that? Item number three of the health report was a well-taken comment. Our plans to mitigate sound from the train, which we find to be not so disturbing, as we've been there a long time. It might be a nice feature for the tenants.
So just to summarize, the four central units, that's the two on the first floor and the two on the second floor, are accessed via the vestibule?
Correct.
And then the end unit here and the one above it are accessed either by the stairs or by a door next to the stairs?
Correct.
This unit here is accessed either by stairs or a door next to the stairs and the same thing on the end unit?
Yes.
Okay, great. Doug, you're up. I think, Beth, you have to let Doug share his screen.
You pull my drawings up. Can everyone see that drawing or not?
Not yet.
No. Maybe you can't because I'm on my PDF here.
All right, is it the iPhone, Doug, or is it the screen?
It's my desktop.
It's your desktop?
Yeah. Peter, do you have that up on your screen there?
I just made you host. Try it again.
And I don't think it's going to work.
All right, I'll call it up. Give me one second.
You can call me.
Doug, I tried to make you host, but now you got to make me host again to be able to screen share it.
How do I do that?
Right-click on me and say make host.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to zoom into the colored piece of it there.
There you go. Perfect. Yeah. Yeah.
I'd like to introduce Doug DeVesta, our civil engineer, to go through the civil engineering aspect and respond to the comments. Doug?
Okay, good evening, Doug DeVesta, Freshwater Engineer, representing the applicant. We were asked to lay out a site plan for 80 South Street there, utilizing the footprint that Kurt Verdi provided to us. So what provided is a parking lot coming off of Taylor Avenue to 18 parking spaces with one handicap space. We provided sidewalks along Taylor Avenue and South Street and with interior sidewalks around the building to the various entrances to the units. We provided street trees along South Street, an existing tree that will remain. Then we're providing trees at each end of the parking lot. And we're also providing a dumpster pad for the trash removal from the units itself. We were also asked to look at the storm drainage, storm water management for the site. We're providing a catch basins on the south side and north side of the parking lot. Everything will be drained. The high point down the center will be drained to the catch basins on each side. Then that will be drained into a manhole where we manifold it into a detention system consisting of four-by-four galleries, two rows of four-by-four galleries, which will infiltrate into the ground with access points at the end there for cleaning out. We utilized the TR-55 method to determine the volume of runoff. We looked at the pre-development conditions, which consist of the lawn area, gravel driveway, and the existing house. Took a difference between the two, pre and post, and came up with a determination of the volume of runoff for the sites. We utilized an infiltration rate based on what we did across the street at the Verdi woodworking facilities there to design a detention system. We'll go through the comments from Wright Pierce, and then we'll go back into this. So what we're looking at, again, two rows of four-by-four galleries to handle runoff from the roof areas, part of the parking, all the parking lot, and part of the sidewalks that are draining towards the parking lot itself. We went to the PUC back in March 16th, 2020. We got an approval for an increase in sewer flow to 600 gallons. We based that on the number of units, and then we deducted the amount of flow coming from the existing residents. So therefore, we asked the PUC for 600 gallons increase in sewer flow, and we were granted that. And the sewer line is located right here on South Street. There's actually two laterals coming into the facility, property with one serving the house and maybe one just a stub for something in the future. So it may have been two lots at one time, now it's combined as one. Water is located on South Street, so it will be tying into the building, as Kurt mentioned. In the vestibule, there's a full basement, which where the water line will come in. There'll be two lines. One will be the domestic service, and one will be a six-inch line to service for a sprinkler system. And then metered out from there into each individual units. Erosion control, very simple, silk fence along the perimeter of the property with the stockpile area on the south end of the proposed parking area. Catch basins will consist of hay bales around the outside with the grates being wrapped with filter fabric. We felt that's a very, it's a good way to handle the runoff during construction and any sediment may be occurring. Do you want me to go through each of the comments now, Peter?
No, I think in general, you can just summarize what we're going to do about them. I just want you to talk a little bit about the stormwater elements of the letter.
Okay. We received Wright Pierce's comments this morning. I've had a chance to go through them. What we're proposing to do, the first item, they talked about handling the full 25-year design storm. I don't really agree with that process, but what we what we'll propose to do is take our detention system, there's two rows now, we're going to double the size of this. And we also, we took a conservative approach with the infiltration rate, utilizing the, taking five times the the actual infiltration rate that we got across the street, which well, we'll do it in-situ testing out there. Conservative rate of 15 minutes, dropping it four inches per hour, where the 2004 Stormwater Management Guides tells us to be two times the field-measured infiltration rate. So I was very conservative, so we're going to go back and go two times the infiltration rate required by the 2004 Stormwater Management Manual. So again, we'll be increasing this detention system by two more rows. So have a total of four rows of 40 linear feet each with 12 inches of storm around the outside. At that point, we'll be able to detain around 7100 cubic feet of water, and that will handle just about the full 25 years of storm that Wright Pierce was asking us about. Another thing they asked us about was, you know, providing some kind of, you know, stormwater management for treatment of the runoff. Each catch basin and the manhole here, we each have a two-foot sump in there to collect any solids and sediments before going out into the detention system. So we have three, again, two-foot sump, two-foot sump, and a two-foot sump here. So we've got plenty of capacity for any silks and sand to make it out into the system. Also, on the two catch basins, and we'll have a hood on there, and that will collect and trap any floatables, oils and greases, any kind of trash that may get into the catch basin system before it gets out in the system. So we feel that's an adequate method of handling any sediments and trapping any oils getting out into the system itself. Let's see, what else they talk about? Again, we'll be doing onsite detention, test holes within the detention system and a percolation rate there, so we'll verify any, the soils in that condition. But knowing the area, I believe this area will be all sand and gravel, because across the street, that's sand and gravel. And then two doors down, the Verdi's properties is all sand and gravel. So we'll verify that with through test holes. They brought up a point on the site, on the site plan, comments number three, about the building being within 13 feet of the retaining wall. That's a railroad property right in here. So this corner here is about 13 feet, they're saying. Again, what we talked about was the only full basement will be in the vestibule between the two buildings there, and this would be slab-on-grade with a 42-inch frost wall. So really, any excavation in this area is minimal, and we feel that this will not impact the retaining wall there. And the other place would be where the dumpster pad is, it's about six feet away. Again, this is only a minimal amount of excavation and slab-on-grade for the dumpster pad itself. That's really majority, you know, every other comments are just really just clarifications and minor modifications to the plan itself. They asked for a guide rail along the parking lot right here within the safety zone. I don't agree with them.
Doug, do you mean in the middle of the parking lot?
No, up here where the park, north parking area and the sidewalk is.
Right here?
Right there, Peter? Yep, right through there. They asked for a guide rail there within the three-foot safety zone. That's what the three-foot safety zone is, so a car can overhang by two feet and still not impact the sidewalk. Besides that, there is a six-inch curb being proposed along that side to act as a wheel stop. So I don't think that's necessary to have another guide rail there. The other comments are, again, we'll wrap, we'll prepare a written statement addressing all these comments and submit that back. addressing all these comments and submit that back to Beth, which can return them over to Wright Pierce for their comments again. That concludes what I had to say. Anything else you want me to discuss or not?
Not at the moment. As Doug said, what we will do is take all these comment letters, put together responses and submit them with revised plans as needed. The one comment letter we don't have is anything on the architectural review. We would love to be able to get responses back in time to be on the June 9th agenda. So get to work, Alyssa. But that's all we have for tonight. We're happy to answer any questions from the commission or members of the public.
Peter, it's Pat. How close is the property line of this to where Pat Wild's old house and driveway were? How far back does that go to his house?
If you look on this plan, let's see if I can zoom in a little bit. Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, but this note right here says frame dwelling number six, I think.
Yes, it is. Right.
That's the location of the red house. So the distance from here to here is how many?
About 20 feet. It's about 20 feet.
Okay, thank you.
So as I said, we're happy to answer any questions.
All right, we will put this out to the public first. If there are any questions, if you would raise your hand here on Zoom. There don't appear to be any questions, Peter. All right, then we'll move to commission members. Kitty?
Actually, but the questions I had, you answered. I love the staircases being inside. I was wondering where the laundry room was, and that's been taken care of. And the privacy fence is clearly marked. I think it's a beautiful building so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Penny?
Okay, a couple of questions. First of all, being a 30-something-year newcomer to Bethel, can you explain what the Bowton property is and where that is?
Sure. Our property, can you see this map?
Yes.
Our property is this red
Right.
trapezoid right here, railroad tracks are here. Agway is this large piece here. And then the Bowton property owned by Bowton right now is this tiny little triangle here. It's a white house.
Okay.
Has very little land associated. The next parcel, this large one, is the cemetery. And then the next one over to the right is the firehouse.
Right. Okay, thank you.
All right, it's this firehouse. And I don't know who owns these in the back. Fire department probably owns one of them.
Is there any thought, does anybody know, of making? If you go back to that, to where you, to the slide that you were at before? Show where you were. Okay, thanks. So immediately behind the trapezoid property is sort of like a triangle-ish kind of thing. Is there any thought of bringing that into the VC with the TOD with the VC overlay?
So from our perspective, it's not part of our application, so it can't be acted on as part of this.
Okay.
I think that it's a 1799 house. And so while we made the argument to you that our house is not particularly historically important, I think there may be a different answer with respect to that house. I can't analyze that. I'm not an expert, although the person that shared the report for us was the former owner of that house. And so he had a different opinion as to the significance of it. I think there's interesting questions to be asked about how much of the industrial zone down here belongs in the TOD. That, you know, sure, one or two more properties, you're not talking additional distance.
Right.
Much additional distance to the train station. But how far do you go? Do you go all the way down this big one here, which is the mother lode, which is someday Vanderbilt Chemical goes out of business and this becomes nice housing instead of blooming. You know, I don't know how to answer those questions because that's not what we're looking at tonight.
No, I appreciate that.
But it's good thinking and future planning, I guess is how it is.
Another question. I may have missed this, but are there any entrances that are on street level?
Yes. We didn't put any entrances in the front. So let me go to the other architecture. These are the two elevations.
Right.
So, okay, I take that back because there, we didn't put any entrances on the main buildings here. This building and this large building. There is one front entrance here that enters to the vestibule, which as we noted, serves this unit, this unit, this unit, and this unit, kind of the four central ones.
Okay, so.
This unit here, upstairs, downstairs, you can enter the front and go up the stairs and in. And then the entrance to the other unit is in the back.
On the ground floor.
On the right side, on the ground floor, yeah.
Okay, terrific. And thank you. And where, compared to the street-level entrances, where is the handicapped parking?
Let me go back to Doug's plan. And so the handicap entrance is here. The handicap parking space is here.
Where is some?
Can't see it yet, Peter.
Okay, give it a second.
That's okay.
Do you have the plan up now?
No.
No.
What do you see on your screen?
The architectural, the rendering of the elevations.
Okay, it's just going slow then.
Yeah.
Let me try to stop sharing and reshare. How about now?
There we go. Yep.
There it is.
Okay, so the parking lot's in the rear, accessed off of Taylor Avenue. The handicap spot is the last spot, number nine.
Okay.
From here on the sidewalk, you can walk around to the right and enter the lower unit here. And the stairs are on the front and enter the upper unit. Okay, right, I may have it backwards, but I'll see which ones were. One of them's over here. One of the entrances is right here. And same thing to get up to the second floor for that unit.
Okay.
Then this unit on the end, they're all here. Otherwise, you're going into the vestibule.
Okay, terrific. Are there steps leading into the vestibule?
I don't think so. Doug, can you answer that?
No, no, there's not.
All right, terrific. I'm just assuming that, I think you said 18 parking spaces?
Yes.
Is that what's permitted for 10 units?
Yes.
And it seems to me, space-wise, that 20 feet to the house and back to the 1799 house seems like not very much space.
Well, I think I'd say two things about that. First is it's not between buildings. There's a parking there.
Okay.
There's an entire parking lot. So you're talking, you know, another 60 feet or so to 70 to the building.
All right.
And second, you have to remember, this is the downtown. The houses are close together.
Right.
You know, I just shared the Google Street View. I'm not sure if that came up.
Right, I had seen that, yeah.
Look just across the street at how close those houses are together.
Oh, no. Oh, absolutely. Okay, that's all I've got. Thank you, Peter.
Peter, I'd like to make a point here. There is a privacy fence between the parking lot and the property line.
Six feet.
So we've got about six feet there. So it's about 25 feet from the parking lot to the building itself. But there's a six-foot privacy fence.
And that's this line with little squares?
Correct.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. That's it.
Ken?
Hi. Two quick questions. On the corner of the property, right by the railroad tracks, there's a couple of large, either arborvitaries or cedars. Are you going to be able to save those?
Doug, maybe you can answer that based on your plan. I only see one.
The hemlock, the hemlock is going to stay right there in a corner.
Okay. Second question.
Hang on, Ken, before you move on. Just to make sure I understand what you're talking about. So which is the hemlock, I guess, is the question? Is that?
It's that corner right there, Peter.
Here? Okay.
It's labeled 12-inch hemlock.
Yeah, so this one will save the rest. No.
Okay. Okay. Second question is, can you give me or us a percentage of total green space versus non-green space?
Doug, that'll be your bailiwick. I don't know if you can do that off the top of your head.
My percentages? You want actual numbers?
Either one.
Okay, thank you. That's it. We'll have to work on that.
Paul, do you want me to answer it now? You want to wait at the next meeting?
Sure, go ahead. Can you answer it now?
Well, we'll continue on and I'll.
Yeah, good idea.
All set.
Thanks, Ken. Bob Legner?
Okay, I think it's a very good plan for that piece of property. I only have one comment. I did go to the police commission hearing that they had the other night, and they discussed this. And their big concern seemed to be the turning radiuses into Taylor Avenue. And if there was some way that this plan was going to improve those turning radiuses and get rid of the old telephone pole that's on the opposite corner that burned in the fire many years ago. Because they said that when people drive up there to turn in, they're out in the other lane, a lot of times the bigger trucks. So I think that was their only big concern. Otherwise, they thought, you know, the plan would work quite well.
Doug, you're going to have to talk about the turning radii that you put on the plans.
Can you, could you pull that up, please?
Yes.
It's to the right of the plan. There you go.
Right here?
Yep.
Okay.
So what we've got here is we've got a truck sitting at the stop bar. And then you see the dash lines? Those are the those are the truck tires going around the corner there. You go the one below it, Peter? Now this is the truck coming from South Street onto Taylor. And again, the dash lines are the tracks for the wheels going around the corner there. So I guess the concern, Bob, was for the coming on Taylor to South?
From South onto Taylor, turning into Taylor, I believe, from both directions.
Okay. Well, we're not changing, I mean.
They will probably make it part of their report.
The geometry of the intersection is what it is. I mean, we're not changing any property lines, stuff like that. So really, the Taylor, the geometry is what it is. I mean, I don't know what we can do to modify that at all. We've got a hydrant, we have a hydrant right on the corner of Taylor and South on Taylor Avenue there. So that's, 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 we can't change that geometry with the utility pole on the north and west corner of Taylor and South, and South Street there. So that, there's those issues there we have to deal with. We only looked at it in terms of, you know, going from Taylor to South, South Street heading initially direction. And then same thing coming out of Taylor, going in an initially direction onto South Street.
Just to be clear, we can't do anything about the telephone pole on the property next door on the other side of the street.
I understand. I just.
On the property or the pole, so.
Coming down the line.
Yeah.
The police report.
So Bob, they're questioning something that has always existed.
Right.
A little late.
We don't have the report yet, Jean.
Yeah. Probably it's existed since electricity was invented.
Exactly. It's always been a tight turn.
So, yeah, we did do some mitigation on our site to deal with sightlines in this hydrant. And obviously, the removal of this tree will help that as well. But our sidewalks come around that hydrant, basically. I'll just move it back so you can see those sidewalks. Doug, did you get a green space answer yet?
We've got we've got about 35% green space. So we have 0.3, let's see, 0.13 times 43,560, about 5,662 square feet of lawn. And we've got 0.237 times 43,560. And we've got 10,332 impervious area. So it's about, what did I say it was? About 35% is green space.
Thank you.
Okay, Pat, you want to move along?
Bob, do you have any more questions?
No, I'm good. I'm good.
Okay, Ricky Tibbetts?
No additional questions for me. I think it looks, I think it's a good-looking building and good use of that space, so.
Thank you, Rick. Linda?
Well, Penny was kind enough to ask all my questions, and they were very nicely answered. So thank you on that. I think this property makes a lot of sense to be included in the TOD plan, and I like the looks of it, so I have no further questions.
Thank you, Linda. Rob Wallace?
Sorry, had to unmute there. No, I have no significant questions related to the proposal. Just out of curiosity, and maybe somebody can refresh my memory, is there street parking on either of those streets?
No.
No, I didn't think so.
Could not get the trucks there if there were.
Right. No, so I have no other questions. This has been quite informative. Thanks.
Thank you, Rob. And I have no questions. Beth, any comments?
Just very briefly for Doug, the differences in the parking area between this and across the street, you designed the Verdi property?
Correct.
On that particular property, it's a larger piece. You had 26 more parking spaces. What kind of, how many galleries were proposed for there?
We didn't, we didn't propose galleries over there.
Right.
We did a, we did a center, we did, we have everything draining to the center utilizing pavers and utilizing a stone infiltration bed there.
But you didn't feel that something like that would work on this site or even the compromise was using some of the pavers that you have going in and out of the driveway?
On this one here, Jean?
Yeah.
I just felt that using a gallery system would have been, you know, an appropriate use for this property here. I mean, you're thinking something differently, thinking of using the pavers again like that?
Well, I mean, to add four more, now you have to put in four more galleys in order to meet the 25-year, you have to put in two more galleys, making it a total of four to meet the 25-year.
Right. Well, that's, see, that's where I have my problem with this. When Wright Pierce reviewed the property across the street, one of the, you know, Todd is no longer there, and I think Barry's the other one. There really was no issues with the way I did my calculations.
Right.
Now. Now, now with, with Todd gone and these other two gentlemen reviewing it, was it Barry and?
Joe.
Joe reviewing it, now, now there's, there's, they want me to design for a full twenty-five-year design storm. I really don't.
That's something we should discuss.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I don't, typically, when you do something like this, you look at pre-development, post-development, and you really start, start the difference. And that's what we're doing.
Correct. Okay.
And in your typical storms, you know, a typical rain, rain event is, you know, half inch into rain. Again, we might get up to two inches in a short period of time. But getting, you know, getting a full twenty-five-year storm, we may get those things, but that's over a twenty-four-hour period.
Right.
So there's time that we're to infiltrate into the ground. That's why I don't agree with their, with their comments, so I'm just trying to address their comments, so we keep this project moving forward.
Okay. All right. And Peter, as far as the architecture, we just recently finalized the contract with Alyssa, who's now on her own, and I'll be speaking with her tomorrow. And hopefully, we can set something up between all of us to discuss it further.
Could we do a Zoom meeting with?
That's what I'm hoping.
Katie and Alyssa, me and you.
Yeah. Because I, as I mentioned in my memo, there's some, there's more detail that is needed on the drawings as far as the materials, things like that, because we have run into problems with two previous applications in regards to that.
Got it.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thanks, Beth. All right, so this public hearing will be continued to June ninth while we're awaiting other reports. Thank you all.
Peter, don't leave. How do I get back my host? Or else you're gonna stay here all night.
Definitely not gonna do that.
Okay.
Oh, come on. Beth, you want everything.
I mean, I'll leave the camera posted, you know, on my nice brick wall, but.
Well, Beth, you're hosting now.
I'm all set. Okay.
Okay, next on our agenda is our business meeting, and I'd like to seat Rob Wallace for Steve Duchell. If everyone's had an opportunity to read the meeting minutes, if I may have a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting.
Kitty?
Thank you.
Any discussion? Beth, do we have to call out each person to get an approval on this?
No, it's the minute.
I'm sorry, and I didn't hear who seconded that. Was it?
Penny did. Penny.
You're all on audio, so for example, if somebody wanted to abstain or vote no.
Perfect.
Have them just.
Perfect. All right. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. We have no work sessions. Planning and zoning department report. Beth, that's you.
Yep, and if you drive up and down to town, you'll see some pretty cool outdoor eating areas. We've been working for the last two weeks with everybody. I don't know, I guess thirty, forty different restaurants. And everybody, there's two left. We have to go over to Halsey Shida tomorrow to finalize his layout over there. And, and that's, you know, it's going very well. Just a reminder, tapu, when a restaurant has a full restaurant on premises, they happen to have a food truck. We are allowing them to have the food truck on the premises too. So tapu does, is used in the food truck until the first of November. Food trucks are not allowed here in town. And that's the only exception to the rule. The, I had one question for you in regards to that. It came up in discussion in the front office that Did Bob leave? No, you're there. I'm sorry, I'm getting mixed things here. But anyways, the broken symmetry, when broken symmetry was redesigned for restaurant use, it had an outdoor patio, correct?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Outdoor patio. Outdoor patio also included the bad canopy that was in disrepair. She could not use that broken canopy or put people underneath there. Well, the canopy, we finally finished it, took, it was a two-year project, and she has started to use that for her business. That's just an extension of what you all previously approved, correct? I'm just asking for that.
Yes.
Right.
Okay. That's all I wanted to do with that. Unfortunately, I had to bring it to your attention because it was just basic, yes, but there was some disagreement with some members of the public. As far as our June meeting, we had originally scheduled the public hearings for Shelley Road and Good Hill Road for the twenty-ninth of June, which is a Monday. So that should be changed to the thirtieth of June, which is a Tuesday. Okay? We're gonna do a special meeting for that, just to do those public hearings.
Right.
And not do our regular business. So our regular business now, we do have the South Street, and we have one oh four Worcester Street, and those will be handled during our regular business meetings. Okay? And, and that's all I have for you right now. Unless you have anything, any questions?
Beth, Nacho, they're not going to use their patio now, correct?
Nacho is, they have the use of their patio if they choose to use it. They did get an approval to put a bar out there, and I believe that they're still.
He was gonna give it another week, I think, before he.
He was trying to work with the health department and get the bar approved.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's the last I knew.
And I just want to say thank you, because I think you've allowed roadside signs on Greenwood Avenue that the restaurants tucked in the back and say that they're open. They're in front of the Dolan Plaza. I think that's really nice.
I mean, we have to, you know, everybody knows, and we'll pay for it dearly next year.
Of course.
Of people coming in and wanting to do different things, which is fine, you know, but we have to.
We gotta get.
Yeah, we gotta, gotta keep everybody notified they're open.
Yeah. Whether we agree with it or not, we have to give them the opportunity.
Exactly.
And the sign points, you know, whatever.
Yep.
Lot of blind eyes going on around here.
Nobody's ever been, no one's ever been killed by a sandwich board.
You clearly have never been in New York City.
To my knowledge.
So, Beth, just to let you know that as Stan is president of the Village Square Condom Association, and there are two eating places in there, there is, I guess it's now got a new name. It used to be Laurie's.
Laurie's, yeah.
Now, apparently, they finally came up with a new name, and Sprouts.
And Sprouts.
And Stan got in touch, the minute he heard about this, he got in touch with them and said, just FYI, if you're looking to do outdoor kinds of things, you know, give the land use office, give them a call, because this is something that you can now do. And Dong, the owner of Sprouts, put on Facebook that they're not going to open probably until the middle of June period. There may be, you know, a bucket of reasons for doing that. But, you know, to try to spread the word, get, you know, like, we can do this.
Right. Yeah, sure. That's all I have for you tonight, Pat.
Okay, any commissioner comments?
I have a comment.
Yes, Bob.
I think somehow we ought to commend Spobieros that did such a nice job on renovating the front property. I know that was part of their agreement once they got to put the two apartments in the back in the barn. And I think a good example of what we're looking for up and down Greenwood Avenue.
Which building is that, Bob? Is that where Ed, Barbara Ed is?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it looks great.
Very good.
It is, yeah, the nail salon.
How about a letter?
I think a letter from the planning and zoning, or a letter from the land use office.
Let's do it from you guys, because you're the ones that wrote the regs.
Okay.
Planning and zoning.
Autographed picture for Bob. Usually, usually does it.
You know what? I never say anything, but I, since we're talking about department stuff, I just want to point out that Fred Pollard has been doing a tremendous job with keeping up with all of the permits for sheds, pools, decks, that have been coming in. He is, he and I have a great working relationship. A lot of it, almost all of it, is coming in right now via email. And he is right on top of it, and I'm grateful for his help, because it's one less thing that Beth really has to, since we engaged in. So I just wanted to let you all know that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess no other commissioner comments? If I may have a motion to adjourn, please?
No, 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 no.
I'm sorry.
I see Betty's iPad in romper room.
Oh. BJ?
And a whole bunch. Switzer.
BJ?
I don't have any comments. Oops.
Nice, there is a reminder, BJ.
Well, we just wanted to say thank you for being there.
And I don't see anybody else. Does anybody see? I see Julia.
I saw Pat and Switzer, but.
I see Pat paraphrase.
My two's in listening mode, so I'm good.
Yeah.
Hi, Rob.
Hey.
Rob, you want to say anything outside, not about the public hearing?
Oh, no, I'm just, you know, just dropping in, seeing how things are going, you know, seeing how things are going in the old neighborhood.
Rob, where are you living now?
Right in the street from me.
Yeah.
Oh, nice.
Okay, I guess that's it.
All right, if I may have a motion to adjourn, please?
No moves.
Penny, thank you. If I may have a second?
Second.
Was that you, Kitty, or Bob first?
Bob.
Whatever. Thank you, Bob.
They'll fight you for it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention? We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Good night, everybody.